Adam Block speaking. All right. Good evening. It's 7:15 on May 5th. Same scheduled meeting of the Needham Planning Board. I'm going to begin by reading some introductory material, so please bear with me. My name is Martin Jacobs, Planning Board Chair. First permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Jean McKnight.
Yes.
Thank you. Bruce Eisenhardt.
Yes.
Thank you. Paul Alpert.
Yes.
Ted Owens.
Yes.
Thank you both. And also Adam Block, who is a candidate for the Planning Board in the upcoming election, who is running unopposed. Adam, I think I see you are muted. I think I heard you pick up a phone call just before we started, so I'm going to acknowledge for the record that you are on the line. Also, Planning Board staff, Planning Director Lee Newman.
Present.
And Assistant Planning Director Alex Clea.
Present.
Thank you. On our agenda tonight, we have Agenda Item Number One pertains to Needham Farmers Market, but that is actually going to be put off until May 19th. Also, on a public hearing agenda at 7:30, Article One, where applicant is seeking a map change to general residence zoning district. That is also has been dealt with completely, so that is off the agenda tonight. The other zoning bylaw, public hearing 7:30. For warrant article number two, seeking a zoning amendment to allow a pediatric medical facility in the New England Business District by citizen's petition. We have here with us tonight Lisa Hogarty, Senior VP of Real Estate Planning and Development at Boston Children's Hospital.
Hi.
Lisa, thank you. We have for Children's Hospital Attorney Tim Sullivan from Goldstone Stores of Boston.
Here.
Thank you, Tim. And we have Attorney Bob Smart of Needham.
I'm here.
Thank you, Bob. From VHB Parking and Traffic Consultant to Boston Children's Hospital, we have Sean Manning.
Here.
And we have from BETA, B E T A, serving as the Planning Board's Peer Review Traffic and Parking Consultants for the town. We have Jeff Maxtudis.
Here.
And Justin Gurwitz.
Here.
Have I forgotten anyone? Okay, thank you. Okay. So it's now, again, it's now about 7:19 on Tuesday, May 5th, and this is an open meeting of the Needham Planning Board. This meeting is being conducted remotely consistently Governor Baker's Executive Order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the Governor's Order suspends the requirement of the Open Meeting Law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. This order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. That is what is happening here tonight. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will allow public comment. For this meeting, the Needham Planning Board is convening by Zoom as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that all attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you. And please take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All supporting materials that have been provided, members of this body, are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the Chair notes otherwise. Before we turn to the first item on our agenda, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. First, I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. And please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the Chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. For those items with public comment in our public hearing regarding warrant article number two, we'll have public comment. After members have spoken, I will afford public comment as follows. I will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once I have a list of all public commentators, I will call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. I note that each vote taken in this meeting, if any, will be conducted by roll call. I will now ask for a motion from a member of the board to automatically continue this meeting to May 21, 2020 at 7:00 PM with the same Zoom ID number. If any technical difficulty should arise that keeps us from continuing, may I have such a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Clarification. Did you say May 19th?
I think I said May 21st. Am I wrong about the date?
It's the 19th.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Lee. Jean, I assume you amend the motion to May 19?
Yes, I do so move, May 19th.
Thank you. And Paul?
Yes, I second the motion as amended.
Thank you very much. Discussion. All in favor? I got to do that by roll call. Forgot. Okay, I'm going to start with myself. I vote aye. Jean?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Ted?
Aye.
And Bruce?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. All right, now we turn to our agenda. Again, as I mentioned briefly, first item on our agenda is going to go over to May 19th, pertaining to Needham Farmers Market application for a de minimis change. Second item is a public hearing. The first item on the public hearing for zoning articles was a map change to general residence zoning district. General Reson B zoning district, but that has already been dealt with by the board, and that's not going to be heard tonight. The other zoning article is scheduled for 7:30. We're not quite there yet, so I'm going to come back to that. The third item on our agenda is a request to withdraw an application in A and R Plan regarding 766 Chestnut Street LLC for property located at 766 Chestnut Street. And as to that, let's see. I don't think we have actually. Let me see what we got here. I believe we have a letter from his attorney, Smart, is it?
Yes.
Requesting. I seem to have misplaced it. Hold on. Yeah, here we are. Okay, we have a letter. I'm going to just brief. It's very brief. I'll read it into the record. Dated April 28, addressed to the Planning Board, Dear members of the board, by this letter, the applicant, 766 Chestnut Street LLC withdraws its A and R application which was filed with the town clerk on January 28, 2020, without prejudice. Please confirm acceptance of the withdrawal. So, other than confirming acceptance of the withdrawal, does it require a vote, Lee?
Yes, it does. I think it requires a vote of the Planning Board to allow the withdrawal without prejudice.
Okay. Can I have a motion to that effect?
I move that we allow without prejudice the withdrawal of the application for approval not required of the plan for 766 Chestnut Street.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. I'm going to ask if all are in favor. Again, I'm going to start with myself. I vote aye. And Bruce?
Aye.
Thank you. Paul?
Aye.
Thank you, Jean?
Aye.
And Ted?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. That's a unanimous vote. Item number four on the agenda is a request to extend the action deadline on 390 Grove Street for a definitive subdivision amendment. We have, on this one, we have a letter from Attorney George Junter Jr., dated April 28, addressed to Lee Newman, Planning Director. Dear Lee, pursuant to our telephone conversation this week, due to the ongoing COVID-19 state of emergency and in recognition of the Board's desire to have continued active public participation in the hearing, please accept this letter as a request to further continue the hearing on the definitive subdivision application for 390 Grove Street until June 30 or the next earliest meeting of the Board. While it is my understanding that action deadlines have been told, T O L L E D, pursuant to the relevant order of the Governor, to the extent necessary in connection with the foregoing request, please also extend the applicable action deadline until July 30, 2020. Okay, so I assume we need a vote to that effect, Lee?
Yes, I think you need a motion to accept the request to extend the action date on this subdivision at 390 Grove Street until July 30, 2020.
I have a motion to that effect.
Yes, I so move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. I'm going to call the roll. I'll start with Ted.
Aye.
And Jean?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
And I am also an aye. That's a unanimous vote. Okay. We still have a couple of minutes, according to my clock. Number five on the agenda is minutes. We have two sets of draft minutes, February 18th and March 6th.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I marked up the February minutes, and I needed another 15 minutes and didn't quite get to the other set. But I will create a PDF of my markup and send it, or email it to Lee and Alex, and they presumably will make revisions if they agree with my markup. And I'll of course include the other members in case they have any comment also on the minutes after my markup goes out. And I'll take care of doing that tomorrow.
Thank you, Jean. My only suggestion would be if anybody else on the board has any suggested changes, they do the same. And then we should have a redraft by the next meeting. So, thank you. That's Agenda Number Five, Correspondence. Is there any correspondence? I don't think so, Lee, but maybe you have something I don't know about.
No.
Okay. And I think one minute to go. Lee, or Alex, or any of the board members, does anyone have any report they'd like to make?
Mr. Chairman? I was just curious, do we need a motion to continue the farmer's market?
No, that was not advertised as a hearing. That was being processed as a de minimis change.
Okay.
Okay, so no one, I didn't hear anybody say that they had a report they want to give, so.
Well, I have some updates to give, but it's going to take a little bit longer, I think, than you anticipate. So maybe we should do the hearing first.
Okay, fair enough. It is by my clock, 7:30. And so we will now proceed back to the second item on Agenda Item Number Two, public hearing on proposed warrant article two, to amend the zoning bylaws to allow a pediatric medical facility in the New England Business District. And this is by citizen petition. This is a continued hearing. I'm going to ask Lee to just quickly bring us up to date on where we are.
Yes, the Board conducted the hearing at your earlier meeting in April, and I think at that time there were two unresolved issues that related to the parking generation report that was provided by the hospital and the trip generation report. We had hired a peer reviewer, BETA, to actually take a look at the parking generation numbers and the trip generation numbers on behalf of the board, and there were still a number of outstanding questions. And I think the charge back to children's was to take a look at the issues that BETA had called out and to answer those outstanding questions, and then for us to give it to our peer reviewer to take a look at that document for us to identify any outstanding issues currently. I think so currently, the hospital has conducted, has basically answered those questions and provided a document, and I think they're going to speak to that next. And our peer review consultants have also taken a look, and they're going to speak, I think, about what their findings were from those now revised numbers that have come in from the hospital.
Okay, thank you. So let's turn to VHB. Is Sean going to be the presenter on that?
So, Mr. Chair, I don't know that we were going to re-present our information. It's essentially identical to what was presented at the previous hearing in April. We did receive some updated questions and comments from BETA, and we've had some back and forth to try and answer their questions and/or provide supplemental information. And I believe we have given them what they were asking for. We're receipt of a follow-up memorandum from them reviewing our materials, and I'll let them speak for themselves, but I think we've closed out outstanding issues.
Okay, fine. Before I turn to BETA, does either Tim or Bob have anything you want to say?
No. No, Mr. Chairman, I think, you know, at the last meeting, a comprehensive presentation on what the zoning amendment is, you know, the memos that VHB provided, and the economic benefits. As Sean mentioned, we've gone back and forth. We've had that opportunity to get BETA the additional information, and they've updated their memos, so we're here for questions. Of course, we reiterate our request for a recommendation from the board, but otherwise, we're here for questions.
All right, thank you. And Bob, did you have anything?
Yeah, just a favorable recommendation is what we're asking for.
Okay, fair enough. Okay, from BETA, who would like to go first?
This is Jeff Maxtudis from BETA. I'm going to request that Justin shares his screen with us. We have a very brief PowerPoint presentation of just a few slides I'd like to go over.
Okay.
And again, Jeff Maxtudis, with me is Justin Kurwitz, Senior Engineer for BETA. And just this first slide, I'm just going to briefly review what the process was that we went through, and then hand it off to Justin just to clarify the findings. So, as we talked about at the last meeting, you know, VHB had provided both parking demand and trip generation information for Children's Hospital Founder's Park. There were several iterations in response to comments and documents. I'm not going to go through all those. And then BETA replied to those comments in response to comments. March 11th was the ones we talked about in the previous meeting. And then subsequently, an April 14th and April 30th were the latest round that we submitted to the board. And I'll just say in those latest documents that we were just addressing any outstanding issues. We didn't repeat issues that we had that were adequately addressed in the March 11th comments. So, in general, VHB has addressed all our comments at this time, and we have found that the trip generation estimates and parking ratios appear reasonable for the project at this time, is our general findings. And just to go over some of the specifics of the latest outstanding issues and closing those off, I'm just going to hand it over to Justin to just go over those. We have a couple additional slides. Thank you.
Thank you. This is Justin Kurwitz with BETA. Just, these are very similar to the slides that were shown at the last Planning Board hearing. Just to cover the peer review comments that were outstanding at the last and that have been addressed here. As far as the parking demand memorandum goes, there was seven original comments that we had. All of them have been addressed. There was one that we were looking to the Planning Board for an interpretation. Other than that, all the remaining have been addressed, and the same goes for the trip generation. We had seven original comments, and all those comments have been addressed. That one outstanding parking demand comment, that was based on the town bylaws for the Medical Services Building, and that's been detailed in our memo submitted April 30th. Other than that, just a quick summary. These are replicated from the previous presentation. When we look at the average of the six different source data for parking demand, the benchmark of similar sites within healthcare networks, the comparative method that looks at the other satellite offices of Boston Children's Hospital, the IT parking generation manual, the zoning bylaws, the zoning bylaws based on the both interpretations, and then, again, the proposed zoning amendment. We get an average of 3.52 parking spaces required per thousand square feet and 1,593 spaces required. You'll see that the outlier is that zoning bylaw. If you were to interpret the actual zoning bylaw, that's where that number spikes. That is the outlier. Outside of that, our average would drop down to 3.16 spaces. A 3.1 spaces per thousand square feet and 1,430 spaces. So in terms of the parking demand that's being, that will be provided as part of this site, that is adequate from our review. Trip generation, just looking at this, the previously approved sites, you'll see the first line is the previously approved sites here. The unconstructed buildings, the three office buildings that Boston Children's Hospital is looking to purchase. The second line there is the actual proposed trip generation based on the revised memo. So you'll see the third line, the 282 morning or AM peak trips and the PMP trips of 361. Those are the total additional trips. Currently, we see out there that there is an existing difference in the actual occupied buildings of what was projected versus what is actually seen. When you subtract those from the additional trips, you'll see a total of 23 in the morning and 115 in the afternoon, that you'll see additional trips as part of this development. Other than that, the trip generation is acceptable based on our review. So I will turn that back over to the board for any questions.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm going to, one by one, go down the board list and ask if there are questions. Let's start with Jean.
Yes. In reading the last version, and I did find it a little confusing, all the various dates, but finally of the VHB reports and the BETA reports, but I believe that everything is summarized as far as the comments back and forth in BETA's April 30th memos, both, two memos, the revised trip generation evaluation and the revised parking evaluation that has the comments in different colors at the end of each section. So I think that by reading that carefully, I got everybody's comments. And I guess there's one thing I want to make sure people are aware of, because, you know, I think it's a positive thing, and it had to do with the applicant responding, for example, in the trip generation, to the concern that the traffic counts may have been taken at a time when buildings that will be perhaps more densely occupied aren't so densely occupied at this time. And just kind of concerned about that, the date on which, you know, counts are taken and that sort of thing. And the response, which is on page five of the traffic account, April 30th memorandum is, "Boston Children's is open to discussing the conduct of supplemental counts in the future in connection with the administration of a future annual traffic and parking monitoring program as a future condition of approval and occupancy of the BCH buildings." And then that is also referred to, and a similar issue having to do with the count, you know, there are various factors that came up with the reasonableness of the parking and the conclusion that what was proposed is reasonable. And one was the actual numbers of people whose cars were parked, or number of cars who actually were parked in the existing garage. And again, there's always an issue of when was that count taken? Was it perfect? And it said at the bottom of page 13 of the parking report, "This may be something to consider monitoring over time as part of a future traffic and parking monitoring program for the site as described separately in the trip generation response." So I just want to make sure I understand what's being proposed here. I think I agree wholeheartedly with it, and that is not really at the time we're going before town meeting, or between now and the time we're going to town meeting for approval of the zoning, but at the time, as the zoning bylaw calls for, that the applicant would be appearing for the Planning Board to seek a special permit for the project. There would be perhaps some updating at that time, but even more important, a condition of a special permit to make sure that the parking is, and the whatever traffic mitigation measures are proposed to control traffic generation are, to make sure they're adequate. No question that even after the special permit is issued and the project is occupied, there could be traffic counts, parking counts, and alleviation of any issues that arise in the future. Perhaps Mr. Sullivan, Attorney Sullivan, could address that, to make sure I understand. Is that the intention?
Sure.
Attorney Sullivan.
Sure. Yes, I think that as part of the special permit process, there's often monitoring requirements that are incorporated. In fact, I think the existing special permit may already have some of that currently, but that's certainly something we anticipate we would work with the board on.
And then I may as well, you know, keep on with the one issue that seemed outstanding, and that is the Planning Board's interpretation of its own bylaw as far as the parking requirements of the uses that are in our bylaw that pertain to hospitals and medical establishments. And I know I carefully reviewed each one, and I certainly agree with the conclusion in the reports that none of these are exactly analogous to what is being proposed here and can't just be a quick, you know, taken and said, well, we have to match this, you know, standard, or we have to match that standard. It's useful for reference to look at the standards for those different kinds of uses, but none of them dictate what we should be doing here. So I just wanted to say that after review of that question, that is my point of view.
Okay. Thank you, Jean. Ted?
I have no comments or questions other than to say that I do agree with Jean that the outlier number that the outlier number is a piece of data, but it's not definitive.
Okay. Bruce?
Yeah, I'd like to also parrot what Jean said regarding future monitoring. But the special permit application would be the time to discuss that, I think. Although it may come up at town meeting. And I'm more concerned about the traffic generation than the parking. I think the traffic generation information is going to change. I think PMC occupancy will muck up the whole works in that whole area. I know that's outside the scope of this project, but so that's my concern. But I'm just reiterating what Jean said.
Okay. Paul?
Yes. I'm also totally on board with Jean's comments. In my review of the materials for tonight, I was focusing more on the parking because parking is part of the zoning bylaw amendment. And so I focused in on that. And I am satisfied that the parking request for the zoning bylaw is a reasonable number. I believe it's 290, one space for every 290 square feet. And I think that VHB and Beta did, both did outstanding jobs in making sure that that was presented to us in a manner that we could, we could be satisfied that the zoning bylaw as presented is a reasonable bylaw for the parking. I agree that the trip generation and traffic issues in general are all going to be issues for the special permit process and are not really, although they may be raised at town meeting, they're not really within the four corners of the zoning bylaw. Those are my comments.
All right, thank you. I don't have anything to add to what's already been said. I feel the same way as the others. So any final thoughts from Attorney Sullivan or Attorney Smart or Lisa Hogarty, who's with us also from Children's? Any final thoughts?
No, I just want to say thank you to the board. The back and forth and input from all of you has been incredibly helpful. Also, thanks to Beta and that team for really making sure we were as precise as we needed to be. So we really hope that there is a positive recommendation to move this forward. So thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. And Tim or Bob, anyone who wants to say anything?
I will just echo what Lisa just said. You know, I think the planning board has been very helpful for us in, you know, our drafting of this article. We think it's a good article now as redrafted.
All right, thank you. And Tim?
Same here. I appreciate all the effort and thank everyone for their time on this.
Okay, great. Okay. My understanding from Lee is that there's been a request from either the Select Board or Kate that we delay a vote on this.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, do you want to see if there's any public comment available?
Oh, sure, of course. I didn't understand that any further attendees were on there, but I see now that there are. So I think I see as many as nine members of the public who have been listening in and may want to comment. So I would ask if there are any members, any public members who would like to be heard to please signify by showing, raising your hand. And I'll make a list of those people and then call on you one by one. Any comment, pro, con, or otherwise. So Alex, are you making a note here of who, Alex or Clay, anyone who may be?
So I don't see anybody. This is Alex. I don't see anybody raising their hand. We could give them another five or 10 seconds just in case they are trying to figure out how to do it. But no, nobody's raising their hand.
I'm happy to give a little bit of time in case anyone wants to say anything. All right, well, I'm not seeing any indication that anyone else has raised a hand to be recognized. Am I missing anybody? Alex?
No, nobody's raised their hands, thanks.
Okay. Okay. So Lee, my understanding is there's been a request from either Select Board or Town Manager to briefly delay a vote on a recommendation until the pilot agreement is resolved or?
I would say that it was, you know, it was in conversation direct. It was recommended to me that the planning board not take any action until the town has finalized that agreement, yes.
Okay.
Question?
Jean?
But that wouldn't stop us from voting tonight to close the hearing.
No, I think we can close the hearing, I think, and we can take this under, the plan would be, I think, to take this under consideration at the planning board's next meeting on the 19th for a recommendation.
A formal recommendation.
A formal recommendation. Town meeting is currently scheduled for June the 4th. So there's sufficient time to take care of that.
Okay. So let's proceed that way. I think it's fair to say for the record that the Children's Hospital representatives heard tonight a sense of the board of what the recommendation is likely to be. But I think we won't, we won't actually formally proceed to that vote. But may I have a motion to close the hearing?
I move that we close the hearing.
Second that motion.
We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. I'm gonna ask for a roll call vote. I'm gonna start with Ted.
Yes.
And Jean?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
And Paul?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes, that's unanimous. Okay. That is that agenda item. And I believe that's our last agenda item. Have I missed anything, Alex or Lee?
Yes, I just wanted to give you a brief update on some of the projects that are coming forward just so that you have an expectation of what will be on your future agendas. And we have been making a really strong effort to continue with the permitting process. And we've created a way for folks to file further applications electronically. And so permitting is moving forward in the ZBA and conservation and planning with the goal of allowing projects to proceed so that when this pandemic and the lockdown is done, people aren't delayed in terms of being able to move forward on projects that they desire to implement. And so we've received two subdivision filings. They came in last Monday. One is a six lot subdivision off of Chestnut Street. It involves, I think, involves one of the parcels that was part of this A and R that was just withdrawn. And then there's a PRD proposal at the end of that. So we've accepted that application and we're in the process of distributing it to the different divisions to get public or get feedback from the different departments on that project and to move it forward. Secondly, the hospital is on our agenda for an amendment or de minimis change to their special permit to extend the life of a trailer that they have behind the facility during the period of the pandemic. So I just wanted to, and those are the, those are the three kind of permits that we've got that have been filed and that we're in the process of proceeding with. And finally, the project that looks at some redevelopment of the Carter's Building to provide for assisted and independent living is moving forward. And I anticipate getting from that developer the proposed zoning changes that are required to allow that reuse to occur along with the fiscal impact and traffic study. And that will likely be on your agenda also for the 19th.
Thank you, Lee. Anybody have any comment or thoughts about what we've just heard?
I do, I do have a question about the Carter Building. Lee, you said that will require a zoning change. Is the use not similar or the same as the use that had of that building that had been going on for several years?
The problem is not the, yes, the use is very similar. The change is not around use. I think they want to take a very small section of the building. First of all, the building is preexisting nonconforming relative to height. It's three stories, the height profile for the district is two and a half. But they want to take a small portion of the building and put a four story on it back toward the tracks. That extends the nonconformity in a way that can't be accommodated through an alteration of a special permit. So I think they're looking for the creation of an overlay district to give them the flexibility to implement some dimensional or bulk changes to the building that are currently anticipated in these current zoning profile.
Okay, thank you.
Adam, did you have a question or thought?
No, Jean raised the question I was gonna ask. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Anyone else? All right. If no one has anything else to report, happy to entertain a motion to adjourn.
We'll adjourn.
Do you have a second? Do you have a motion?
A second.
Second. Jean's second. All in favor, let's, Ted?
Hi.
And Paul?
Hi.
Bruce?
Hi.
Jean?
Hi.
And I'm an I. All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Thank you all.
Thank you.
And all the panelists who participated tonight, everyone from Children's, Beta and VHB, thank you very much. We all appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.